Hello, everyone. We have just returned, as you can tell from our closed session. I'm going to give the board members who are attending virtually just a short time to be able to rejoin us. I see Commissioner Zer and Commissioner Clements. There's Commissioner Harder. So we're all back, and we will resume with our normal agenda. There was no action taken in closed session. Those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do not have anyone signed up tonight for public comments, so we will move directly to our reports for the evening. We'll start with our superintendent's report. Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman Nordean, board members, student representatives, and executive team members. Even though there has only been one student contact day since our last board meeting, there are still plenty of issues and tasks to accomplish for many across the district. Firstly, we said goodbye to two esteemed members of our organization, Director of Buildings and Grounds Darrell Peterson and Student Transit Driver Shelley Tycey. Both of these staff members had retired at the end of 2020. Darrell had finished 40 years of service with the district last week, and Shelley's last day was December 22nd, her 44th year in working for Student Transit. Special thanks to the Meadowview staff who played music, and students who created banners outside in honor of Shelley's last day of driving. Both of these people were widely respected, hired by outstanding leaders like Marv Lansing and Flip Flye, and were very deserving of the attention and all compliments given. We will miss them dearly. I know Marv Lansing was visible in the district office a couple weeks back to check in, and Flip was present at Shelley's last day at Meadowview. Speaks volumes about how those two employees were respected, the former leadership makes an appointment to bid you farewell. Secondly, there are various odds and ends that our staff members are able to complete across the district. From a building-to-ground perspective, areas can be cleaned or organized that haven't had the attention due to the prioritization of the pandemic and because students are not in schools at this time. From an administrative perspective, specific smaller tasks and reports can be completed. We've learned that from our school administrators and staff at the district level as well. Yet, these days do allow for more in-depth work on the start of large projects and deadlines, too. We continue to examine our COVID data in the school district and countywide and consult with our local health professionals and agencies. The next couple weeks will be critical for so many of us, according to our health department and medical experts, to gauge the impact and spread due to the winter break. As always, we share the daily statistics with our system leaders and board members, and then our system leaders and principals are able to share with their staff at their weekly virtual staff meetings. Further general statistics and school-wide COVID percentages will be shared on our website. While the vaccines begin to be administered throughout the county, we must still adhere to our successful distancing, masking, and cleaning precautions. Finally, with the start of 2021, I have now learned that our principals and administrators are extremely busy in their preparations for the upcoming school year. They're all planning for registrations for 2122, holding preliminary discussions about budgeting and staffing for next year, honoring instructional model change requests, and planning for second semester improvements. While this window is tight, sometimes it's nice to know that regardless of the school district, the educational administrative work calendar and tasks are similar. I sincerely honor and value the work of what our staff have done thus far to begin preparing for the future. We look forward to a more positive 2021 in so many respects. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. January will be a busy month for the board, as we have much occurring for our coherent governance work, the WASB annual meeting, and of course, our students returning after their winter break. The board survey sent to the community regarding input for our results policy will close January 15th. Board welcomes feedback to help us guide the development of results policies, which will occur at the end of this month and end of February. Additionally, work on drafts of governance culture and operational expectations continue and will hopefully be completed soon. We will also begin working on a preamble for the coherent governance policy. For board members, if you would like your questions about coherent governance, to reach Jan Berg, our guest at the January 18th work session ahead of that day, please add them to our shared document or send them to me via email by Wednesday of this week. I will share them with her, and she and her fellow board member will be able to have those questions ready to answer for us at that time. So if you could get those to me quickly, that would be helpful. The WASB Annual Delegate Assembly will be held Wednesday, January 20th at 1:30 p.m. If you have not received them already, to my board colleagues, I will make sure that you get a copy this week. We will need to decide at our next meeting how we would like to vote on each of the 10 proposed resolutions. I am the designated delegate for ECASD, and will vote according to the decisions of the board. Finally, for everyone that's listening, our regular meeting, January 18th, will take place at 4:00 p.m. to accommodate community observance of the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. So please note and prepare for that time change. Thank you. We now move on to our student representative reports. I think our representative from Memorial Emory Tool is still trying to get on to the meeting, so we will start once again this week with our representative from North, Zoe Wolf.
I had already spoke with Emory, and neither of us have anything to report, as all of us students are just getting back today. So we both hope you all had a great holiday break.
Thank you. Given that report, we'll move on to school board committee reports. We'll start with budget development. Commissioner Harder.
Thanks, Budget Development. We last met on December 16th. We spoke about the referendum timeline and proceeded with some salary and benefit review topics, which we then will continuing this Wednesday with the salary review discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Demographic trends and facility planning, still awaiting results of the APL.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. How about lead, Jim Schmidt?
Yep, nothing new since we last met on December 21st.
And policy and governance has also been recessed over the holiday break. We meet again on Thursday, and will continue our work at that point. So then we'll move on to our legislative updates. Dr. Johnson.
For the 2021-22 legislative sessions of the Assembly Committee on Education, Representative Jeremy Tyseville, Republican Von der Lach, has been selected as chairman, and Representative Joel Kitchens, Republican Sturgeon Bay, as vice chairman. On December 15th, DPI issued guidance for districts offering virtual instruction in 2021-22. So the DPI has identified paths available for a district or independent charter school seeking to offer virtual options to its students in the 2021-22 school year, and they provide some examples as it relates to the hybrid or full virtual. But districts may not offer a fully virtual option to open enrollment students in the 2021-22 school year unless the district operates a virtual charter school, according to DPI. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda. Board considers items on the consent agenda, one vote and no discussion. Board members have been provided background material, or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. If any board member wants to discuss an item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of December 21st, 2020, Human Resources Employment Report, and Head Start Grant Approval. I would hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Because the grant approval, I think, is financial, let's do a roll call vote. Nate, are you able to hear me and start a roll call?
I think I can help out with a roll call.
That would be great, Marissa. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Clement?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
Thank you, Marissa. We now moved on to our individually considered resolutions. We have one item tonight, the McKinley Charter School Contract Renewal. This is back from our previous meeting. Pete Riley is unable to join us tonight to present once again due to illness, but Superintendent Johnson has some information and has been working with him today to answer questions. So I'll send it to you, Superintendent Johnson, and then we can have more discussion and possible action.
Thank you, and good evening again. As Chairman Nordean mentioned, Mr. Riley is unavailable tonight. However, we do have some information that the board had requested when Mr. Riley had presented earlier. At this point, school and district administration were not that concerned right now with deadlines or timelines per DPI or state statute. However, in the documents that you have in front of you, or the contract itself states, the contract shall automatically renew on a year-to-year basis unless one of the parties provides written notice by January 15th of the impending contract year. In our discussions that we had last month with Mr. Riley, he brought up a couple things, and the board had done so as well, some questions. First off, Pete's Charter Governance Board had approved this document at their meeting on Thursday, December 10th, and that's something that he shared with us that was going to occur. Secondly, I learned from Mr. Riley about the decision to opt into a two-year renewal process rather than a five-year renewal process. He shared with me, provided some valuable history here, that in the first three rotations or renewals, the first 15 years of the McKinley Charter School, that there was a five-year renewal process. However, he informed me that past Superintendent Dr. Ron Heilman and the past president of the Charter Governance Board, after the 15 years, the first 15 years of McKinley, they had agreed to enter into two-year contract renewals, of which we have had three, which Dr. Hartabek had continued during her tenure. So those were, I guess that was the rationale, is that that was an agreement with Dr. Heilman, the past president of the Charter Governance Board. And then finally, I've shared some data with the board already that Pete had provided, but I'm aware of the board's desire to have our charter schools expect to demonstrate a specific standardized experience or set of expectations. An example could be historical data regarding graduation rates. In the future, when we present before the board, or when we have charters present before the board, we'll obviously honor that and provide more data and explanation when Mr. Riley is able via board presentation or a possible memo to the board, whatever the board chooses. This evening, administration would desire board approval of the contract as stated this evening. However, we will provide more standardized data and consistent expectations when presenting or informing the board. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'll open it up to comments or questions from the board. Commissioner Zer.
Yeah, thank you. I am happy to renew the McKinley Charter as written, including the five-year charter renewal. I think the thing that, in looking through Pete's data and looking through the contract and looking at our district ethnicity data for this year, there was a few things that stood out to me in the data that Mr. Riley provided the board. And I just want to say, as a school board member, that the representation of students at McKinley versus the percentage that those populations actually make up within our schools, never mind secondary. So you know, you look at the percentage of students that are Native American or Black in our schools total, the percentage that does not add up. When you look at McKinley's data, it's not representative of our district. There are students, there's overrepresentation at McKinley compared to our district. And I just want to say that, you know, to the administration and to our teams that are working on that, you know, that is concerning. And I'm very grateful that McKinley exists. I'm very, very grateful for the type of education that they're providing to our students. But I think the ultimate goal should be that our students feel that they can receive their education within the normal school structure. And if those, you know, if we can see those lines being drawn along racial, ethnic, socioeconomic lines, then we need to be doing a better job in our non-charter schools to make sure that we're reaching those students.
So if there are no other comments or questions?
Just a point of clarification.
Sure.
Could just someone point me that I guess it, so we're moving back to a five-year?
So the request from McKinley Charter is for a five-year authorization? And I think it's also the request of the administration here to approve that request? That's specified in the contract. So all we would need to do is, shouldn't that be our, you know, interest is to approve the contract? It's written as a five-year contract.
Commissioner Nordean, could I suggest a friendly correction on page one of the contract?
I'm sure that you can, Abby.
So in number one, it says the board is seeking to extend this contractual agreement through the 2021 school year. I believe it should be 2122, or you might want to reword that, because I know you're looking at in number 23, it has the five-year, but I know it should have been 2021, because that's in the year we're currently in.
Sure, that should probably, is it 26? Is that the end of the, I gotta up the scroll down here?
Yeah, I think it's, yes, correct, through June 30, 2026.
Sure, so I imagine that line should read 2026, or 2526 school year.
Just for the record, there's really no such thing as a friendly amendment or not.
That's fine. So I would love to hear somebody move on the board to amend the contract to strike 2020, 2021 on page one, number one, paragraph one, and replace it with 2025-26. Someone willing? Thank you, Commissioner Harder. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, then, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Dr. Becca?
Just when Principal Riley returns, when he has an opportunity to talk with us further about the McKinley data, could somebody ask him to make sure to explicitly consider Commissioner Zer's question about the representation? Because I think if these data came forward from one of our other charter schools, Montessori or virtual, would we say this was a concern or a success? So I would like him to speak to that. I would like administration possibly to speak to that.
To your point, sorry, Tim, I just don't know if you can see me.
Just fine, Commissioner Zer. So go ahead.
To your point, Commissioner Becca, I think that the goal with our charter programs is that they are representative of our district. And when they're underrepresented of our district, that's a cause for concern. But when they're over, when there's, when there's, when certain types of students are overrepresented, no matter where on the spectrum of race or privilege they fall, I think that it's a cause for, I think it's a cause for us to look at it and to say, what type of segregative processes are going on there? And why is that happening? Why are certain types of students gravitating towards this one type of education versus being able to be served within the walls of all of our schools? So I think the concern has to fall on both sides of the coin. I don't think it's any different than the diversity issues we face at Montessori. It's just the other side of the coin. And the question is, we have to ask ourselves, how do we make sure that these programs are representative, are actually look like our district total? And so I, you know, a competency program, a program where students are, you know, are coming there because they have, they have for one reason or another fallen behind or are unable to achieve the things within the confines of their normal school that they, you know, that they should be able to. And when that data shakes out to be overrepresented in certain ethnic, I'm concerned as to why is that happening? And the root of it is not at McKinley. It's at, it's within our, the structures of teaching and learning that we have within our current program. So I think representation, I don't know that Principal Riley necessarily speaks to it being a success, or anything like that. I don't really recall that a success. I think any, if that data came out of Montessori, if the ethnicity data out of Montessori looked like that, I would be saying the exact same thing. So I think we have to be very careful about how we look at that.
Commissioner Lyons.
This is a bit of a different subject and more of a process question, but it's somewhat related to Abby's comment as well as Commissioner Johnson. And on the last page of the contract, I see that in alignment with the approval of the one year which Ab- Johnson asked us to edit, this contract comes back every year for renewal, but it's a five-year contract. So I guess my question is, does this contract come back for renewal every year by the board? And the clause that I'm looking at's on page 13.
Commissioner Lyons, are you looking at number 22?
Yes, I am. So I understand what we just did in approving the contract for this coming school year. I guess what I'm wondering is, is that an annual process? And if it's an annual process, then the idea of doing a five-year contract is kind of a moot point.
My understanding was that the goal was to do a five-year contract, so it would be approved now and would be in effect through June 30th of 2026, and it wouldn't affect the board unless there was something that wasn't being met.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
But in essence?
Dr. Johnson?
But in essence, we would be given a report annually, though, correct?
Yeah.
So again, if there are no further comments or questions, the board can opt to make a motion to approve the contract as amended, can decline to do so, I guess.
Motion to approve the contract as amended.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Commissioner Harder, I saw that you were unmuted. Did you want to?
I was ready to move a second, but it was not needed.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clement?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we will adjourn to committee. We have three committee reports. The first is the discussion and possible first reading of proposed changes to policies 343.45 Technical College Course Program, Start College Now program, and 343.46 Early College Credit Program. We could bring those up. Thank you. So this came through Policy and Governance in our previous meeting. They are minor changes, I think, to some of the language, but I'll turn it over to Jim Schmidt to share a little bit more with us before we go for a reading on these.
Thank you, President Nordean. So the changes that are brought to you primarily were a recognition of an alignment or a lack of alignment with the state statute. We had been part of some conversations with the Department of Public Instruction and the Wisconsin Technical College System, and went back and did a review along with some guidance from our legal to ensure that all of our timelines were in accordance with statute and the rules written by the Department of Public Instruction and Wisconsin Technical College. So these changes are mostly, there's, in terms of practices for students, in terms of like their impact about who pays, all those things, there really is no change. We are actually, through this process, being much more deliberate to our students, and I'm sure if you are a student of students grades eight through 12, you are now receiving a lot more communications about early college credit, Start College Now, and actually the academy process, which is not actually policy, but just a contract to service with the technical college. So these were simply done to do that alignment, but we also recognized the need to be much more clear with our students, and so we began that campaign of sharing dates and deadlines. Just to give you an idea about it, when you see a deadline on here now, what we do is we communicate with all families two months before the due date, one month before the due date, and two weeks before the due date, so they receive three notifications, in addition to the communications that they receive through their guidance councils earlier in the year. So again, structurally, there are no changes. Most of it is just cleaning up the language to be consistent, and it did, like I said, spur us to be much more clear with the timeline, so that our students and families were not surprised when due dates came and went.
Thank you, Jim. I wonder if there's someone who would volunteer to read, we're on 343.45 here. I wonder if there's someone who would volunteer to read, we're on 343.45 here?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
I volunteer. Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. "The Eau Claire Area School District shall offer to high school students who meet eligibility requirements to enroll in one or more courses at a technical college that is physically located within the state of Wisconsin through the Technical College Course Program, Start College Now Program. The Start College Now Program allows a student to earn post-secondary credit while in high school. Programming for the Start College Now Program is provided by technical colleges in Wisconsin. The Director of Academic Services shall be responsible for determining whether the district will approve individual applications, pay for specific courses, and award credit based on the criteria established in state law and district policy. To enroll in the Start College Now Program, a student must be a Grade 11-12 student in good academic standing. Complete an application for admission to the technical college by these dates for enrollment to comply with State Statute 38.12 (14). Fall session March 1st, spring session October 1st. Enroll in a course that is not comparable to a course offered in the district. If the student or family chooses to enroll in a course that is comparable to what is currently offered within the district, the student/family shall assume the cost for the course taken at the technical college, and the district will not accept the course for high school credit. If a student disagrees with the district decision regarding comparability of courses, satisfaction of high school graduation requirements, or the number of high school credits to be awarded for a course, the student may appeal to the district's, may appeal the district's decision to the State Superintendent of Public Instruction within 30 days after the decision. The district shall cover the course's tuition, fees, and textbooks associated with the course taken throughout the Start College Now Program. If the student does not receive a passing grade for the course or drops the course after the term begins, the family will assume the responsibility for reimbursing the district for the total cost of the course's tuition, fees, and textbooks. If the student/family does not reimburse the district for the course that the student failed, the student will be ineligible for any further participation in the Start College Now Program. The district shall pay for up to 18 combined credits from Start College Now and the Early College Credit Program for each student. The student/family will assume responsibility for any needed transportation for this program adopted December 2020, revised December 2020."
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. If we could switch over to 343.46 and have another commissioner volunteer to read that. They are similar enough in their changes that I think reading them together before discussion makes sense.
I can read this one as well.
It seems like it would either be you or me, so go ahead.
All right. What number is this?
This is 343.46.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. They are very similar. "The Eau Claire Area School District shall offer to high school students who meet eligibility requirements to enroll in one or more courses at an institution of higher education that is physically located within the state of Wisconsin through the Early College Credit Program. The Early College Credit Program allows a student to earn post-secondary credit while in high school. Programming for early college credit is provided by an institution of higher education (University). The Director of Academic Services shall be responsible for determining whether the district will approve individual applications, pay for specific courses, and award credit based on the criteria established in state law and district policy. To enroll in the early credit college program, a student must be a Grade 9-12 student in good stand, in good academic standing. Complete an application for admission to the institution of higher education by these dates for enrollment to comply with State Statute 118.55 (3) A. Summer session February 1st, fall session March 1st, spring session October 1st. Enroll in a course that is not comparable to a course offered in the district. If a student or family chooses to enroll in a course that is comparable to what is currently offered within the district, the student/family shall assume the cost for the course taken at the university, and the district will not accept the course for high school credit. If a student disagrees with the district decision regarding comparability of courses, satisfaction of high school graduation requirements, or the number of high school credits to be awarded for a course, the student may appeal to the district, may appeal the district's decision to the State Superintendent of Public Instruction within 30 days after the decision. The district and the state shall cover 100%, 75% by the district, 25% by the state, of the cost of the course's tuition, fees, and textbooks that is not comparable to what the district offers. If the student does not receive a passing grade for the course or drops the course after the term begins, the family will assume the responsibility for reimbursing the district for the total cost of the course, course's tuition, fees, and textbooks. If the student/family does not reimburse the district for the course that the student failed, the student will be ineligible for any further participation in the Early College Credit Program. The district shall pay for up to 18 combined credits from the Early College Credit Program and Start College Now for each student. The student/family will assume responsibility for any needed transportation to the program revised December 2020."
Thank you again, Commissioner Lyons. Any comments or questions on these proposed policies? Go ahead, Dr. Johnson.
Um, in regards to policies, I would, I would just like to hear from, from the district, what will be moving forward? What will be some strategies to ensure those groups of students from marginalized groups will not only be made aware, but potentially be suggested to take advantage of these particular opportunities? Given the, the data that was shared with P and D overwhelmingly, students who find themselves in marginalized groups, not only based on race, but as it relates to ELL and socioeconomic, find themselves not taking quote unquote, advantage of these opportunities if we view them as additional learning opportunities? So I just would, moving forward, could someone just share strategies in place to ensure that we, not only raising awareness for those group, marginalized groups, but doing some additional support to ensure that they're taking advantage of this opportunity? Thank you.
Yeah, we've, Commissioner Johnson, what we've done already, begun a process, we've worked out, we've met with both the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire admissions and our partners at CVTC to put together a sort of a welcome packet or a checklist, if you will, so that students understand, you know, can walk through the steps. It is a bit of a daunting task to enter into one of these arrangements if you're a student, because you're walking into a different institution, which has an entirely different communication structure and an organizational structure from, from the school district. So we're putting together some of those other supports, aligning with a communication plan that is beyond just what we're, we're sharing with Skyward, so that we're able to reach more students, but also want them to be successful and really have that. And by, by having that checklist, it just doesn't mean, hey, here you go, it's something that they can work out with their counselor, and then have a direct handoff to the university and technical college, so that we know, and the student knows who they're being handed on to at that level, so that ambiguity disappears, and they understand the support systems that are in place to help them make that transition.
I'll echo Dr. Johnson's interest in hearing strategies to help some of our more marginalized students take advantage of this program, reaching out to them. The, the support that, it sounds like you're talking about, Jim, sounds great for all students, and I'd love to hear more about how we're going to get more kids from more places into it.
And like we did earlier, we will update you periodically with the participation demographics like we did already. So it's, that was an interesting dataset, and we again, like to see that change through evolve over time.
Dr. Johnson?
Given, given in light of the, the numbers that were provided, seeming that, it seemed like it was, I thought there would be a lot more students taking advantage of this particular opportunity. I, I'm just curious as, could you speak to, is it the process that you think is preventing a multitude of students or more students from taking advantage of this opportunity? Or is it just the, in terms of the comfort level where our juniors and seniors, our 11th and 12th graders are in terms of their, their development and learning process?
Yeah, I think it's a variety of factors. Another one also is that in a typically year, now a COVID year, it also means leaving the, your high school to try, to go to a different location. That creates, that travel creates some complications, because the student's schedule at the university and at the high school, they're not, they're not designed to mush together really well. As you know, working in the university system, you, to be able to take a course at the university, sometimes that can mean missing more than two or three class periods just to travel, attend, travel back. The courses also don't always run each day. They'll run, you know, as you know, Monday, Wednesday, or a Tuesday, Thursday schedule. So there is a bit just of a scheduling logistics issue for students. There's also about if they're in the position for that as well. So these are taking courses that are not comparable to our courses. So they may not be at the level of math or the role language to be able to take advantage of those. So they have to have, be in a place where their schoolwork is prepared for that level of, of challenging, which is one of the reasons why we've tried to bring academy courses, because the data we sent you, there was actually two different datasets. One was the Early College Credit and Start College Now dataset, and the other one was the academies, which were, which were with CVTC, they were trying to bring onto our campus, so that that travel is not such a challenge in logistics. And that, that takes some coordination. This technical college is much more nimble in that respect than the university, but that is a huge challenge. So it's, it's being in a place in your, in your academic career, having the schedule work out, and that is simply also just, you know, some students, some students are eager to take that leap into that environment, some are not. And so some of it is for a variety of reasons. Some of it is upper level experience versus some others. So we have to look at ways that students can see themselves in that environment to be successful. So there's a variety of factors, and those are only three of the, of the initial ones that come to my mind, based on your question.
Thank you. We have a comment from Emory Tool, our representative from Oreo.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
We can.
All right. So I am actually in the Early College Credit Program. I'm taking, I think, five classes this year in it, between semester one and semester two. And I agree, I think there are a lot of factors that limit kids from taking it, not in the least is travel. The only reason I can take so many this year is because of COVID, because a lot of things are virtual, so it kind of cuts down on most travel times. But I think a lot of my peers are simply not aware of it. There are a lot of my peers who are equally as academically successful as I am, and equally as able to transport themselves to the university, that just didn't hear about it till too late. As you know, those deadlines for getting approved for classes are very, they're much farther ahead of the actual term starting. So I think a major thing in increasing, you know, participation in this is simply telling students about it more. I'm not sure that I ever heard a whole lot about it. We, in a typical year, have a giant meeting in the auditorium with our grade level about the upcoming academic year. It's usually limited to a very short, you know, maybe two-sentence spiel somewhere in the midst of, you know, that hour of information. So I think if we could, you know, direct it more, like maybe put it out to teachers of AP classes, or just teachers in general, to reach out to students that they think would be a good fit for the program, I think just increasing outreach and information about the program would help increase participation in it.
Thanks, Emory.
Dr. Becca?
I have two questions. I think the first one is related as a possible barrier, so that the point about families reimbursing the district, so some of the new, an addition is dropping the course after the term begins. So I wonder if that, I don't know if that's a barrier or not. So the, the threat of, what if I don't pass, or what if I decide I don't like this class and I want to drop, and then the family's responsible? There's, I wondered why you added that, dropping after the term begins, because there's always a drop period, and it's not, it's not right from the moment the term begins that you can't drop. So I wondered about that, and then I wondered if there were, sometimes there are extenuating circumstances, you know, family-based factors that are outside of their control. So how firm was that? And then my other question is to enrolling in courses that are comparable, new language is the district won't accept the credit. So I can understand why the family would assume the cost, but I don't understand why we wouldn't accept the credit.
Yep. So I'll start first with the, the, your question about extenuating circumstances does always exist. So if a student has a unique concern or situation, we, we always have that in place. We debated quite a bit whether or not you put that in the language, because you don't want to open that door. It does appear that everyone would say that they have an extenuating circumstance, but that is always, and so when I said at the beginning, in terms of practical matters, this really doesn't change practices in terms of the impact of a student has a unique situation that comes up. We have, always in the past, and will continue to support that student. The, the language about the, the accepting the credit actually is a legal interpretation. That was actually something that we had to dig in and work with our legal, the firm, the district's law firm, to help understand the statute, because it was not very clear from statute. But when we unpacked that, that is actually kind of baked into part of the assumptions of the, of the legislation. Because if you're entering a comparable course, you can go and take another course somewhere else, but you're really not wanting to supplant your, the intent was never to supplant the district's curriculum. And so really, that line was not something that was arbitrarily created. It was, it was really taking a lot to, to consolidate DPI, the statute itself, and the different legal advice to really, to better understand this. We actually, the first version of this policy that just said quite a bit earlier, there's a lot that the legislature did not make clear, that we were going to try to spend a lot of time to do that. And that's, so that language is really quite purposeful, because we went back to the original intent of the legislation as, as we were able to unpack it.
I guess I still, so to the first question about this new language, drops the course after the term begins, I still feel unsure about that because I still feel unsure about that because there is a drop period.
You're talking about the university?
Right.
You're talking about a drop period without penalty?
Yes.
That's something we could go back and revisit to make sure that our language is consistent with that.
Because that, that would seem to be, that could potentially seem kind of threatening. You know, someone's going to do something new and they really don't have an option to back out of it.
Sure. We can, we can check with both institutions to make sure that language is, is accurate.
So you'd be looking for something, Dr. Beekow, along the lines of, instead of after the term begins, after the organization's designated drop period or whatever the language would be on that. That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can do that.
So given that, I would suggest that we take this back to P and G, Jim, so that you have time to, to find out, you know, how that, how that'll work at CBTC and UWEC and, you know, those are going to at least stand into proxies for other institutions that our students might engage with. It's small enough that I think if, if you had it ready for Thursday, we should be able to fit it into policy and governance then.
I think we could get it ready.
And yeah, and then we can bring it back as a, at a future meeting. And Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, Jim, if you, if you just go to the registrar's, the site on UW Eclair, you'll see the drop ad language available there. So I think given, given, given trying to align the language, I'm not sure about CBTC, but I know UW Eclair, the language is directly there about the drop and add here.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyons?
Jim, is, the course options has been kind of a, a piece of legislation that's changed quite a bit over the last few years, isn't it? And if it is, when it does go back to policy and governance, maybe having some sort of caveat or disclaimer in the policy that recognizes that the policy really is built upon the state statute. So we aren't bringing this back on a regular basis.
Yeah, we did, we did, we did try to add that, you know, the to enroll in, we, we did add in both of the policies, the second bullet, you know, to be to comply with, you know, we did that sort of not at the start, but embedded within it, but we could add that at the beginning as well.
Okay, so we'll take that back to policy and governance and bring it back for another committee report at a future meeting. We'll move on to our second report tonight, job description and labor market review.
Thanks, Tim. So I think Beta is going to pull this up. Or no, I'm sorry, Marissa. Great, thank you. So tonight's presentation goes back to an opportunity that we had in 2019 to replace a policy that was put in place originally for hourly staff members related to a reclass process that the board had asked us to develop. So if you can move forward to the next slide, please, Marissa. So this simply indicates policy 513. This is the policy that we have adopted. This is the job description and labor market review policy. So the purpose of this policy is to assure that this has an equitable process in place to review both the job description as well as the salary grade placement for each position in the district. The process ensures that the district's salary schedules do not fall behind the labor market, creating a situation in which positions are impossible to fill. And salary schedules are out of line with the qualifications, duties, and expectations of the positions. The review of each position is conducted on a five-year rotating cycle. And the 2019, 20, the 2019-20 school year was the first year of review with any financial modifications to occur as of the July 1, 2020. However, due to the pandemic, the process was pushed back and the information that we're that we're presenting to you tonight would have been shared with the school board last spring, had we been under normal circumstances. Next slide, please. This is a sample of the section of the hourly salary schedule for the 2020-2021 school year. As you can see, each physician has a designated salary grade, which was assigned to the physician during the compensation plan revision in July of 2016. The salary grade is determined based upon the qualifications needed for the position, as well as the duties and requirements to be performed in the position. The sample review illustrates positions ranging from salary grade three to grade 12. And again, this is just a sample of some of the positions that we have within the district. But I thought it was important to show you how the salary grades correlate to the positions as well as the beginning salary of each of the positions. Well, the process that's used in the labor market, the job description, labor market review process. So the way that we do this is we take the job descriptions that are up for review in that particular year and we seek input about whether or not the information in that job description is up to date. The input that we get comes from employees that are in the position, supervisors of that position, and then make modifications as necessary. We share the job descriptions and salary grade information with the third-party vendor that we have that are part of this process. And then we compare our district job descriptions to similar job descriptions across a variety of industries. They determine salaries from comparable jobs using hundreds of reliable salary surveys. They age the data to ensure that they act, that there's accuracy for the present date. And then they make recommendations to the district related to the salary grade placement modifications. Once the district receives those recommendations, we take that information and we compare it against our internal salary structure and any other similar position descriptions. We review the current job description at the recommended higher rate that we receive from the third-party partner that we use to ensure the appropriateness of their recommended placement. We conduct comparisons to position responsibilities to ensure that similar positions were placed at the same level. And then we evaluate all the recommendations individually to meet and meet with the consultant to ensure the accuracy and the understanding of the process and the recommendations that they made to us. This is the list of the job descriptions that were reviewed in the first year of this process. There were total 26 job descriptions updated and reviewed to determine if a salary grade placement was appropriate for the qualifications, duties, and responsibilities of that position. And of those 26, 13 of those have been recommended for a salary grade level modification. The information before you represents the recommended positions for the salary grade modification. You can see that of those 13 positions recommended, there are 209 total FTE that are involved in these recommendations. That the recommendation can range from either one or two salary grade level movements. And then that's a total of 100, I'm sorry, a total of an annual increase in wages of $187,628. However, you'll also notice that there's four positions that are starred and highlighted in blue. Those four positions are part of the food nutrition department and those are accounted for in 150 rather than the district's operating budget. So the overall of the operating budget is $161,666. So with that recommendation, following this policy and using our third-party vendor, the administration would recommend that the board vote to approve the listed salary grade level changes at the next school board meeting. And then based upon the information that I just started sharing with everybody, I would be happy to entertain any questions from board members.
Thank you, Kay. We'll start with Mr. Lyons.
Kay, did you mention when the salary increases would go into effect?
Yeah, they go, it would be retro to July 1 of 2020.
It would be retro?
Yep. Had we been able to do this in a normal circumstance, we'd be presenting this information to you in spring. And then recommending that happens July 1 of 2020, but because of everything being pushed back both in the district and the vendor, we would make them retro to July 1 of 2020.
Kay, does that mean that you would have, we would, we would expect to see you again in this coming spring with another set of review? Or did that also get pushed back due to COVID?
That'll also be pushed back. We would anticipate that it would be the third year that we'll be back on the actual cycle. We, we don't anticipate being as late in year two as what we are in the first year. Probably somewhere in between this year and what, what we would normally have been in spring. So probably somewhere between those two, but not as late as what we are this year. Simply because we're, we're already farther along than what we would have been or than what we were under the safe ride home order. So we don't anticipate making spring, but we also don't anticipate waiting until January of next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Harder?
I just want to say thanks for going through this process. I know it's been, it's a, I think it's really important that our hourly workers, you know, that we stay up to date with competitive wages here or hourly wages. So I'm very glad this is happening and appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson?
For in preparation for the next meeting, this item comes up, is it possible to have a copy of this PowerPoint sent out to us since I was unable to call it up for me? The board docs?
I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, I didn't understand that.
So I, I just, could I, just so I could just have, have the information available to me, I was unable to call up the, I did not see the, that PowerPoint presentation on the board docs. So I was just, if I could just look, have it just to look over in more detail before our next, our next session when we're to vote on this, I would appreciate that. Just it'd be, send a copy of it, your PowerPoint presentation?
Certainly, not a problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyons?
And one question about the, the market data. It was geographic, like a Midwest comparison?
Yep. The company that we use, they, they use our regional area. So they use Wisconsin School District as well as districts within the Midwest. As you said, region, I believe there's some that they pull from Minnesota. And again, depending upon the positions, you know, like they will often take a look at the specific positions where if it's an IT position, a higher level IT position, you may end up, you know, uprooting your family and moving for, for that position where if it's a crossing guard position, you're probably not going to do that. So depending on the specific position, they pulled that from different areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the only question that remains then is if the board is comfortable starting this item on a consent agenda. Now it can be pulled. I know, Dr. Johnson, you're wanting to look over it more specifically, but we could always start it on the consent agenda and then it can be pulled if, if need be. Seeing nods from my colleagues that that's okay. So we'll intend to start with this at least on the consent agenda. And of course, if we need to discuss it more, we can. So we'll move on to our final report for the night, the open enrollment report. Kim Kohler?
Thank you. I'm going to share a PowerPoint and I think I just saw the blue ball pass, so. You should see a PowerPoint titled Open Enrollment?
Yes.
Thank you. So with the turning of the calendar, it is really time for us to begin thinking about, believe it or not, the 2021 school year. And so tonight I would like to speak with you about open enrollment for 2021. We do need to have board action on open enrollment for 2021 by the end of January. So you can see here that the cycle does begin in January of each year. There are four distinct periods. In January, districts are required to establish which schools or programs would be closed to open enrollment students or open enrolled students the following school year. So that's why we're here today. In February through April, we will have families begin to apply for open enrollment for next school year. We will place them in May and then we have an alternate open enrollment period that begins July 1st to the end of the school year. But today's focus really is to establish which schools or programs are closed to open enrollment for the 2021 school year. A school or program can be closed due to space limitations. So tonight I'll share with you administrative recommendations for closings for next school year. Our first administrative recommendation is that North Star Middle School Arctic Zone be closed to open enrollment for the 2021 school year due to space limitations. Also, due to limited capacity, administration recommends that Prairie Ridge Early Learning Center be closed to open enrollment. The community sites for 4K would remain open. We simply wouldn't place open enrolled students at Prairie Ridge Early Learning Center. The district can also close specific programs to open enrollment based on staff capacity and the number of services provided to a pupil within their IEP. And so based on our staffing capacity, administration does recommend that we state there are zero seats available for open enrolled students at the Int cluster site programs that you see listed here. Closing the cluster programs at these sites doesn't close the entire school to open enrollment. It simply indicates that we do not have any seats available in the special education cluster sites at those schools. The IEP of any open enrolled applicant within individualized educational program is reviewed by the superintendent's designee each, with each applicant. And if it's determined that special, that the special education and related services required for that student with a disability are available in the district and that there is space available in the relevant grade level or the program, then the student's open enrollment application is accepted, provided there is no other cause that the application would be rejected. If the special education or related services required for a student with a disability are not available in the district or if there's no space available in the related programs or services, then that application would be denied. And we will serve students with IEPs. Simply, these programs that you see listed here, we know will not have room next year. So we're recommending that they be closed. And when An example would be, often students that are expelled from a district will apply for open enrollment to surrounding districts. So that is an example of other criteria that we would look at. So when that happens, as an example, I will meet with the family and get the expulsion information from the district that expelled them, and we will make a determination on whether or not that student would attend the Oakley School District or if their application would be accepted.
Thank you.
So with that in mind, it is recommended that we have seats for open-enrolled students at all of our locations. So that you can see here that all schools are listed, including Memorial High School. So on September 25, 2017, the board indicated that all open-enrolled students were to be placed at North High School. So to foster the social-emotional growth of students, we have administratively placed all open-enrolled students at elementary and middle school in a path then that feeds them to North High School, so that they're with the same group of students as they travel pre-K 12. I just want to take an opportunity to update you regarding high school enrollment projections so that you can consider that 2017 board action and perhaps reconsider that action. So what you'll see here on this slide is, at the time of the December or September 2017 board decision, so this would be all the way over on the right-hand side, so working from right to left, Memorial High School was near the capacity limit. In fact, you can see it was at 90.4%, and North was at 77.8%. In the fall of 2018, the new high school boundaries took effect. And that coupled with open enrollment practices has closed the gap between those high school capacities. In fact, if you travel then toward the left, you can now see that this school year, North is at 93.6% capacity, and Memorial is at 84.6% capacity. And next year, North is projected to be at 99% capacity, and Memorial is projected to be at 81% capacity. So if we follow that board action on September 25, 2017, all open-enrolled students would be placed at North High School next year, although we are, will be at 99% capacity at North High School. So the demographic trends and facility planning committee asked me to pass along this concern. And administration is asking that you reconsider reopening Memorial to open enrollment and attempt to balance enrollment between the two high schools once again. So in summary, there are three asks or recommendations from administration. One, close the Arctic Zone Prairie Ridge Early Learning Center and cluster programs for special education. Number two would be to keep open all of our community sites, all 14 elementary schools, all four middle schools, and all three high schools. And then we have an additional request that administration be allowed to have flexibility to place students where most space is available, rather than limiting it geographically to one area of the district. And that concludes the information I needed to share with you. So if you have questions or would like to discuss, I'd love you to answer.
Thank you. We'll start with Commissioner Harder, then we'll go to Dr. Johnson.
Oh, thanks for this report. And I just wanted to say a word about the North Memorial enrollment numbers. And, you know, and back in 2017, we did, I was on the board back then, we did work very hard to, to create a balanced enrollment between the two high schools. And I wouldn't have expected it to swing quite so quickly in this, unbalance in the other direction so quickly. But I, from that experience, come away with the strong opinion, yeah, let's balance, let's keep it balanced, and if that means going back in the opposite direction. My question is, is there something that maybe, should we just continue? I wonder if anybody in the administration has a thought on, should we just continue with this idea of just sort of adjusting and seeing, watch and adjust? Or is there, should we rethink the way this policy is worded a little bit?
It is helpful. So my office places open-enrolled students. And even though we do funnel all of the kids, we try to keep them on a track that will keep them when their years, pre-K through high school. At elementary school, what that means is we really have six or seven schools to choose from that will then eventually feed into, at this point, North High School. And I will say, when there is space and there is flexibility, we are typically able to find, first of all, a placement that has room and it doesn't stress the school that, or the grade level that we're placing students into. But second, also to consider where the family is entering the city and trying to place them geographically where it makes sense for them. So as an example, at the elementary level, when we look at placing a student, perhaps that's coming from Mondovi or Grand, we really look towards Sherman or Lake Shore. If we have somebody that is coming to us from Chippewa Falls, we lean toward Locust Lane or Northwoods. And having that flexibility, I think, works well for the district, but I also think in many ways, it works well for the families. Some of our families that come from Mondovi may have a 40-minute drive to North High School, where if we could place them perhaps at Memorial, we could cut that drive down for the family as well. So I do think the flexibility offers a win-win for the district and for the students and families that are requesting the open enrollment.
I guess a quick thanks for that, and then I guess a quick follow-up. Given the idea, well, assuming the idea that we continue to believe in the value of balanced enrollments between the two high schools, should we maybe reword, rather than the specific redirections, and maybe just a broader policy saying, you know, requesting that administration work towards that objective? I don't know that it's worded that way right now.
And policies-
I think we have specific, we have specific measures in place, like the open enrollment measure that you're asking to sort of take back. But is there, is there an umbrella, just, hey, we're trying to balance these, like you guys figure out how you balance it, but we want it balanced?
So that is one of the policies that Jennifer and Mandy and I have been working on, is our open enrollment policy, because, you know, the guidance that we get from the state shifts from time to time, so we always want to make sure our policy reflects that. So as we work on those revisions, if that's something that the board would ask, certainly this is good timing, as we're looking at that policy anyway, so we could look to add something like that if that's-
Yeah, I see it as not necessarily, I mean, it affects the open enrollment question, but that's a facet of the question of how do we balance the high schools? So, but yeah, that would be great. Okay, thank you. That was my point.
Dr. Beagle, we'll go to you, and then to Dr. Johnson.
I just thought it might be helpful to mention in the coherent governance writing that we're doing, that is explicitly stated in one of the expectations that the superintendent and, of course, the staff would be regularly monitoring the geographic trends. So ultimately, this work shifts to, shifts away from the board and completely to the hands of the administration.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
So just a point of clarification. So that additional request, so the administrative flexibility to place students where most space is available? So besides the high schools, are you, are you giving parent, are parents and students provided options, say, from the middle school and elementary school perspective? Or are you just saying, you will go where we, where we will place you? Because I guess for me, there potentially would be some other underlying familial desires to attend probably one elementary school or the other if they're all, you know, if they're, if they're all open. So how does that work in terms of that flexibility request? Are parents provided options? Or it's no option, you go where you're told to go kind of thing? And so that probably doesn't, that didn't mean to come off like being like really like harsh at the school district, you go or you wouldn't go. But I was just curious as to kind of, that flexibility, what are you thinking of, besides the high school perspective, what would that look like?
Sure. So in the application, families are able to provide their kind of top three choices. Like if I were to come to the Oakley School District, I would prefer to go to these three schools. We, or one of these three schools. We take those into account, and if we can honor it, we look to honor it. But ultimately, we do assign families, and sometimes it's one of the schools that they may put down as their preferred choice, and other times, it's not. And so we will offer a spot in the Oakley School District, we will assign them to a school, and then ultimately, the families have the option to accept the placement or decline the placement. So we may place 200 students on open enrollment, and, you know, ultimately, none of them could choose to come. Typically, you know, many of them choose to come, but there are some families that will decline for various reasons. Sometimes they'll apply to open enrollment to several districts, and then ultimately, they just, you know, we don't, we never know if they're first choice for a district or they're third. But we do, we place them, taking into consideration, like I said, geography, where space is available and what we feel like would be convenient for the family based on where they're coming from.
I just have a quick question about the open enrollment process for some of these, for Prairie Ridge, for the cluster programs, for the Arctic Zone. So are families still able to fill out an application for, like, for open enrollment into these programs? We just then reject them? I'm just wondering if we actually track how many people are interested in these programs? Does that make sense? How many people are interested in sending their child to Prairie Ridge? You know, do we keep track of that? Or is that something that because we close open enrollment, then we do not know the demand for that program?
They are able to put it down as an option. You know, they can say, I specifically remember one request, for example, for the Arctic Zone, that we processed, and ultimately, when that person didn't get into the Arctic Zone, they did end up going to a different school in the district. But I don't know that it's, I don't know that that data is tracked, although I think we could probably begin to do that. Ultimately, we would place them elsewhere.
Yeah, my question is really, is really the, I guess, what is the goal of closing the facilities? Because obviously, they're going to be filled by non-open-enrolled students.
Right.
And so the question, when this has always come up in the past that I ask, you know, just to myself, is why would we ever, why would we ever not want to see who's interested in coming to our school district, right? If we've got a tremendous program, a tremendous early learning program that, you know, benefit, could benefit, you know, students that live just outside our borders, you know, I've always wondered, why wouldn't we want to know that those families are looking to us? You know, and I, so I've always just asked that question in my brain of just, even though we know that we wouldn't be able to place them, why would we not want to know that they're interested? So that's always kind of been my, and that has come up in my brain with relation to the Arctic Zone, with Prairie Ridge, with Montessori, with a lot of these programs, is why wouldn't we want to know, I guess?
So for students that are interested in the early learning program, we do accept their applications. They're placed at our community partnership programs, and that actually is the grade level probably with the most open enrollment requests, because it's very closely tied to childcare. So that one, we do have a fair amount of data on because of the number of open-enrolled students in that program.
So I'm going to move to our other computer here. My view has crashed on my computer, so I can't see if anybody else wants to speak. So I'm going to get up and move there. If you do want to speak, please do in a moment. Hopefully, you won't get an awkward view of the top of my head. Sort of duck here. Kim, my only question is, is this something that can be taken care of in just one item on a consent agenda, you know, approve open enrollment recommendations? Or do we need to split out the removal of the all-students-go-to-North into a second item?
I think we could write the executive summary to have all three on there.
Okay.
Make a note of that.
All right. So are there other comments or questions on this item? All right. Seeing and hearing none, then we'll call it, we'll look to put that on the consent agenda for next time as well, with all three of the items. So at this time, I will ask for items for agenda, future agenda requests, excuse me. And hearing none, I would hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.